We will call the regular planning commission meeting of May 19th, 2025 to order at seven o'clock P M. All rise to the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation on your guide, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evan, roll call please.
Let's start from that at the table. Pedajetic.
Here.
Brian, here. Excuse me. I just realized. Okay. Patterson.
Here.
Shaw, you're here. You.
Here.
And that's it?
Yeah, that's us.
What did you realize?
Oh, no, I was looking at it and it's like, never mind.
Okay.
Looking at the wrong line.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mike.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Okay, then we also have the meeting minutes from the April 21st meeting. Everybody got a chance to look that over? Becky sent copies. Questions, concerns, otherwise?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 21st, 2025 as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Always calls me and asks me. Okay, public comment? All right, with them being quiet, let's move right into the master plan review. Everybody remember? Alicia? Hannah?
So I'm just gonna go through what we have gone through since last time we were here, what we've done, and then the next steps. I had sent Becky, first I'll start with the website. I don't know if any of you guys had a chance to look at that website from the flyer that we have here, but I'll kind of go through it. There's a QR code and then a URL. I wish I had been able to display this, but...
So do we.
So you guys can feel free to go on the website. It's fairly simple to use and navigate, but you can just scan the QR code like he is doing, and it'll take you to your website that is just for you guys. It has the survey linked, and it also has this thing called a community map. Basically what people can do, and it says here, to take the community survey quick here and then to add a comment to the map. It's just called the map here. Click here. So the map is for, basically has the village over made up, and people can pinpoint issues that they have and leave comments. There's different keys on there, and I don't know if anyone's taken it, but it is, this website is live. So if anyone were to come in, you can definitely post these up. I did send them to Becky, so I don't know if she has posted it somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, so people can comment on them.
I'm gonna take that. I got a copy on my...
And as we go through, I will get reports of people that have participated within the community. And then it also has our survey, which I also have, I don't know if you guys have the hard copies with you as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So people can already start filling this out?
They can start filling it out now. We will do on there, I don't have a date on there yet. Oh, yours is a little bit, yours has that date. But we, me and Brian have to figure out a date that we're gonna come. I think we decided we were gonna do one of the music in the parks on one of those nights, which I believe are Wednesday?
Wednesday.
It starts in June...
Seven o'clock, June 11th.
June 11th, okay.
Start at seven o'clock, from 1:00 to 8:30.
Okay, so before the end, the survey is gonna run through July 31st. There's 31 days in January, the last day left. It'll run through, so two months, well, one and a half right now. But if we need more time, we definitely will do that, depending on how many responses we get. Me and Brian will come, set up a table, a booth to participate, you know, have this for people to participate. Maybe we'll have little things that people can actually pinpoint on table maps for us, and then we can definitely, even these hard copies that people turn in, we can just go ahead and put it on the website so we can see the reports. It's really cool once you see the end results, the reports. Obviously, there's probably nothing on here yet. We do have hard copies, which is exactly the type of questions that are on the website. Before the website gets deep, if you guys want to look at the survey, if there's any questions that you would feel that need to be changed or added to, I think it's only 10 questions right now?
Yeah, there's 10 on here.
So it's not real depth, in-depth, but...
Well, this is just for the village.
Correct.
So we're always confused with K-PAC road.
So that's what I said, that needs to be updated. Oh, is this on the survey? So that must have just been a comment. That needs to be changed. Oh, that must, I need to highlight that.
It's on the hard copy too?
Yep, we will get that changed.
Right now, I'm looking for it.
We're doing two right now, so that must have just been a carryover by accident that I will get, I'll get switched.
So can I throw out a question real quick, or...
Yes, of course.
So on the same page here, everything we're doing is for our made-of-village, not our made-of-t township.
Correct.
Because I'm seeing some of the questions are referencing township.
Okay. Oh, so you're... Anybody can take the survey? If they are, if they are a developer that develops within the township or the village, but maybe not a resident of the village. If there's something specific, is there a specific question you're talking about?
Question number nine.
The...
Nine person.
Okay.
It says in the case you say the township should consider future recreation.
So we'll have to get that switched.
So it should be developed, right?
So yeah, anyone that develop, okay.
Yeah, well, that was, yeah.
Yes, of course. Okay, so I see, yeah. Yeah, we can get that switched over. That's easy. And once we finalize these, we can definitely get these corrected, the survey and the website. It's very easy to just switch over. But again, if there's any questions that you think are specific that should be added, not geared towards something that you, and I do have a little thing that we'll do today to kind of see your suggestions moving forward with the master plan and what you foresee the village needing. And then the flyer, like I said, we're hoping to get a big one printed when we come to one of the dates. I just have to get a date down and then we'll add that and get that...
That's why you're talking about?
Yeah, the one that has the QR codes.
Oh, okay, here's...
Yeah, so we, it's big and colorful on here, and I'd like to get one printed big for when we come to the music in the park, so people can scan it and take part.
And then I also noticed question number three was the same thing. One of the responses targeted new housing development elsewhere in the township. That was question number three? Very nice.
Oh, that's the same question. Oh, that's what I...
Yeah, we don't want people to be confused.
Sure, yeah.
You know, that...
No, yeah.
So the township's getting a master plan. I think they are working on it too, I believe.
Are they?
They are, aren't they? Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, so, and then we have also pulled demographics. Someone within McHenna had pulled demographics from a couple years back, and then also neighboring communities are made of village, Memphis City, Richmond City, Romeo Village, Almont Village, McComb County. And she pulled demographics from 2018 to 2023, the last census. So basically tells you what type of housing you guys have within the village, gender, race, age, educational attainment, population, income poverty. I'm gonna send you, this is, it's an Excel sheet, so I would like to give this so I can have it sent out to you. You guys can review it, but it's good information to have for when we are updating, to see where we're moving along. If you want to view it, I have it, but I haven't sent it out to you guys yet. So that is what we have done thus far. Moving along, Brian asked me to do a little activity with you guys to just kind of get started with where you see the master plan moving forward. So basically what we kind of want to have an open discussion and want you guys to list out some challenges that you see within the village that the village faces relating to land use, and then three opportunities that you would like to see or changes for the better for land use in the future. So if we can just have an open discussion, if there's, if you want to list some challenges that you guys see and...
Well, I'll begin if no one else wants to.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so the elephant in the room, most of the village is developed. It's like 98, 99% developed. So I'm just curious where we're living.
Like parks and, yeah.
I mean, there literally is only, I believe, like one property, which is vacant. They came out the house about a year ago.
But it belongs to Fosters, not the village.
Okay.
And then you have the Fritz property that he wants to develop.
Yeah.
That's seven acres, I believe.
Yeah, Woolcott, there's a dead chunk too, right? They were talking about trying to squeeze a sub in or something.
Woolcott.
Right, right. And yeast by the river there, by the creek and that?
I think he's the one that came in with a ridiculous amount of homes.
Right.
And it's just, it's...
Oh, but still vacant property.
But it's, that's not, well, to annex.
It's not all annexed, then.
Yeah, there's a lot to do to it before. Yeah, so it's not even...
How much of it is in the village limits?
No, it's not.
None of it?
None of it, not that, not that proposal. Yeah.
Okay. So how much would that affect the survey questions?
Because that one question, that's all it contains to, is where they would think we could put parks and bike trails and...
Yeah, we can definitely...
Yeah, Sheila's locked down on it. Dr. Sheila's on this end down here that the tornado took down. That's in the business district. Think house next to the family.
That's true. Did that just sell? Did that, somebody bought that, I think.
Did they?
But, yeah. It's still in the limits.
Next to the doctor's office up on the hill. Yep. But again, it doesn't belong to the village, so... No. It's nothing that we could look into. We're gonna take over your property and put a park for us. Heaven domain, we're here. Right.
Well, that'll grow like a play potential semi-truck.
So do you have a better suggestion of how those, let me try to find the question, but do you think the village of our township or service should provide part of the recreation activities?
Write that one.
So is there, do you guys have suggestions on a re-creasing of that? Or just should that be eliminated altogether? I was, I don't, I didn't know you guys had that much about that. 90% of them.
There is a piece of property in Fritz Development 3 that was designated for a park, and Fritz was going to develop it, but never did. But again, it's Fritz's property. No, he's, that's dedicated, that was dedicated to the village.
There's a lot.
It's a lot.
Yeah, down by Sterrett's Road.
Road, yeah.
That road. I never remember the name of the road.
Right where the park is?
Right.
Where that little park, the memorial?
We do have a...
No.
No, that's the...
Long path.
It's the sub.
From the village.
As you come up hallway and you're in the sub, that one street that goes toward Main Street and ends in a cul-de-sac. On that street, on the west side, there's a lot. It was 20 years ago. Because Mike Sterrett wasted the property and got it.
Not on that side, it's on this side. It's like where Tori comes in and dead ends. Cul-de-sac. For you. There's... It is, but he doesn't own it. Lot behind that cul-de-sac.
That's, okay, and that's matching up with Mike Sterrett's street. It's on his street.
But it's on this side of the property. So it's not big enough to build a residence.
No, it's a, they designated a park area.
They get to the village and designate it as a park.
But nothing's ever built, so... Got any good ideas for it? It's still there.
That's why I said she may wanna, maybe we could replace question eight with something that they could give suggestions for a park or what they would like to see.
Do you see that people want more parks, like?
Well, there's no room for that.
He hasn't said. Unless you ever hear that.
Like Kevin said, he was right, more landlocked, 98%.
Okay.
Yeah, like the only thing, it's Fritz's land, and if he gave it away to us, then we'd have it.
He's not gonna be there.
No, he's not gonna be there.
No.
All right. So tell me the challenges though that you guys can think of relating to land use. I mean, that's a big one.
And the logic with that was they wanted it to be a fenced-in, enclosed park. You know, chain link, something cute, that nothing barricaded off. Because it's such a walk from way over there all the way over here. So if you want to take your little kids to play on the swings or something, that's, for the little kids, that's a long walk.
And it's not secluded. It's not really a... It could be a dog park.
I was just gonna say it could be a doggy park.
Yeah.
That might be something to go over, well.
Yeah, I'm sure it would.
And where's that at again? One of the corner streets?
Do you know where Mike Sterrett lives?
No.
No.
What's the name of that city?
Can we look it up?
Do you know that name? No, it's more or less...
Well, here's a big map right here.
Yeah, here's two fingers.
Yeah, we wanna, okay, and I wanna move here, here. There's this, this is Jefferson. Is that Jefferson?
If you see where the curves at, there's a...
Yeah, cul-de-sac. Okay, in here, there's a lot.
Little is...
Right there, right there where there's...
It backs up to Tori?
See where that's a wider?
Joe, it backs up to Tori?
No, it backs up, I'm sorry, not, no good. It doesn't back up to Tori, it backs up to land that is, and I don't know if that's the whole piece there, but it seems like it was access. It's in here somewhere.
Right over there?
But there's a problem, because this piece of his property comes out over that.
You can see it a little bit around that.
I see that, yeah. So there's, so do we have access to it or not?
In this area, not really.
No, there's access from Jefferson.
Here, yeah, here, it comes through.
Yeah, and you said a lot right there.
And that's not the Dorothy Moss Memorial Park or that part of the Dorothy Moss? Somebody's cutting it.
Does it say Dorothy on that square, on that one?
No, it doesn't, but I'm thinking that's...
What's in the middle? What's written in the middle of that big square? Yeah, what does that say?
Lot number.
Okay.
Parcelie.
Parcelie.
I believe that's, yeah. But there is access from Jefferson too. But it's between houses, I mean, it's...
It's between houses, yeah, I think that's, I think it is part of the park, of the Dorothy Moss.
Is that from...
Where's, where's her, where's Dorothy Moss at?
That's where it is.
That's it?
Yeah.
Pretty much? Okay.
Yeah.
It got, does it need to add some?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think...
We had talked about, you mean gardening, like... Just because teaching kids have like workshops back there. That's been over 20 years ago.
Yeah, because until he donated that, this was the only access there was to this parcel.
Right.
See, I never knew of it off Tori. The only one I knew was Jefferson. When I knew it, when it first...
This has a little glitch to it, though. This house actually encroaches onto that little east nut.
Yeah. See, and I never knew that existed. I always knew the access from Jefferson. Where it's open.
I'm not 100% sure of the angle that we're...
Where Kathy Marholle? Kathy Marholle is at the corner...
She's opposite Tori in the court.
Is that...
The horse, that bird there? Yeah, I think it's further up here.
No, it wasn't, I was gonna say...
Okay, there, this, but here, see where that's open?
And this doesn't angle right, the walkway, they need to go here.
Yeah.
That's actually the double.
It's kind of hard to tell, that's actually the boundary line right there.
That's the access to that.
Right.
I never knew of this.
This is the old township.
I don't know when that appeared.
Before the only real access...
Something we gotta figure out.
No, this was, this was developed, and I knew of this, when I knew that park existed.
It's not a bad idea to do a dog park, a little small dog park. You'd have to piss it off.
And then a lot of people knew, but I think that was part of the two houses.
People might like that.
I think so.
And I was volunteer to clean up all the dog.
Oh, awesome.
Thank you.
Sure.
What a guy.
What's it, can?
Right. So, all right, so there's one, one little thing we're gonna have to look at then. And I like Mike's idea of the dog park.
I'd say that was a good suggestion.
But maybe leave that out until the, like have residents come up with that idea so that they don't blame for when somebody doesn't like it.
I want a zip line.
That's too late, I'll give it up. Yes, zip line park.
Sure.
I want a, I want a first, or, or pretty go.
Yeah, let them do the survey and if we can put it in there.
Yeah.
And see how we kind of...
Okay.
Well, now, when people go onto the website to do this, can they see other people's comments?
No.
Oh.
I think on the comment map, they might be able to if people pinpoint, but not the survey responses.
Okay. Because I thought it might be cool if we went on and made a suggestion of what we...
You could anonymously do that. If you're really...
But, and would people be able to see it?
Yeah, on the comment map. So the map, there's the map and then the survey.
Not who said it, but what was said.
Yeah, so there's different...
I don't want to be known as...
Sure.
Because it's not always, there's houses real close to that, and I don't know that I'd like...
It basically pulls up, I don't know if you can see, but this is the comment map. Basically pulls out a boundary, and then you can pinpoint, let me see what the, add marker. You would just zoom in to an area, click on it, and then there's different categories. Assets, challenges, housing visions, preservation areas, transportation. You would select one of those, say challenges, and then comment, public, it's a public comment.
Okay.
So your comment, the name, there is a public name on there, but, and then a private email address. I don't know what the email address would do, but... So yeah, you would basically just pinpoint exactly where. It pulls up a little logo, and then someone would be able to open the map and see all the responses.
Okay.
Now, if somebody, the senior citizens, including myself, don't use a computer or...
Of course. We're gonna get hard copies.
Hard copies?
Yes.
Okay.
We'd like copies.
And when you come to the concert?
Yeah, we will definitely have those there. I would like to have, I'm gonna revise the hard copy questions, send some to Becky and have them printed, so if someone wants to come and get them.
Okay.
We'll definitely have some printed for when we are doing a public event as well. But just, yeah, just so you know, it'll run as of right now through the end of July.
I don't know how busy, how busy your schedule is, but our peak number of people that we get at the concerts in the park is for the July 4th bash. And I don't, I don't know what date it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's...
Is it always the Wednesday or like...
Yeah, if that Wednesday's...
I thought it was July 2nd, you're...
Is it second on the flyer?
I thought it was July 2nd.
Okay.
I could go real quick.
Okay, maybe we'll just show up twice, maybe the beginning of June and then just...
That'd be great if you could.
You know, in July.
That'd be great.
No, it can't be the second, Sunday, Monday, do, oh yeah, there's, sorry, 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 yesterday. That's just before the 4th.
Yeah, just before the 4th.
Did they do like fireworks or something?
Nope.
Well, we do have dogs and we give out food, food, yeah, free food for people here.
We will still...
Are we still doing all the businesses in town are donating?
Yes. Yes, I think I've got about 20 right now.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's pretty good. Seems to be pretty good.
Good.
Yeah, we'll solidify it in, and then you guys can spread that name, so if anyone asks.
I know it's a hard time because it's the 4th and people don't like to...
You have to make sure that keep a table open out there.
Still during the week.
There's picnic tables and stuff, we have to do a little...
Or I can bring up a karate table of holding six-foot table.
And we have, we have...
Oh, you have it?
Yeah, we have the types and table, but we can bring.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, that's good. Is there anything other challenges that you guys can think of? I know that is a big one. You know, when you're 90% developed, what do you do? But if there's anything else you guys can think of, it doesn't have to be right now. You can let me know, email me, or email Becky, she can get it to one of us. But from here on, I do have a meeting with Brian tomorrow to discuss the next steps. We're gonna probably be starting to go through the old master plan and dissecting sections. And then we'll definitely do the workshop with you guys too, to move forward. But we, it's kind of like a period right now where we're collecting data. So just until that survey's in, then we do those public events to get the engagement, spread the news, there's a word. And then at the end of that is when it's...
As it all start rolling?
Yeah, we get together and go through the old one and kind of update the sections. So...
Yeah, there might not be too much to update based on our...
Availability?
Availability of your property. You know, I was just looking at the index here going, well...
Yeah, it's just...
Yeah.
We just want, we just want to get our name on that front page.
Well, we can, I can just sign it on there.
But yeah, that is really all the update I have.
Okay.
So I'll get those revised. I'll definitely send them out back when I get them revised. And feel free to take the survey, you know, just to get some response on there if you want.
Then if you guys have anything that you think of for the challenges or anything, you can feel free to email me, email us as a group so that we can all kind of look in on that. Maybe, maybe come up with other ideas from that point. But somebody, please make sure to let Becky know what your thoughts are so that she can relay it to them.
Yeah, and play around if you are on the website with, with the website. If you see anything you want changed. There's not a lot of data on there right now. We can add so much to the homepage, but I think it was necessary for your community.
I mean, we should, I'm sorry, I mean, yeah. I just think back to the other property, we should know what all these properties are before we're talking to everyone in June.
Becky will get us lot numbers and everything, so that we can...
So someone's, what about this lot here? I don't know. What about this lot, you know, I think we should...
Okay.
Be specific, yeah.
You're saying the undeveloped lots?
Yeah, yes, we should have those zeros in.
Sure.
Right.
The parcel ideas, we had on that lot behind the...
What's that?
That lot that we were talking about for the park.
But what is that, the only empty one within the village?
The village, yes.
Yeah.
So yeah, I guess it's not gonna be too hard to get those numbers.
That just got easy.
Yeah. Perfect.
Becky'd be surprised, we did something for ourselves.
So independent.
Okay, so anybody got any questions, comments before we move on?
So you're gonna nail down a date for the music in the park?
Yes, for attendance and probably maybe do twice, like I mentioned, June, maybe once in July. You know, just to kind of get, you said we have, you guys have peak attendance in July. So if one of us can make it in July, definitely be a good idea. But I'd like to also get in there before.
Yeah, you can, well, like I said, it starts June 11th, and it's every Wednesday till August, the third week of August, I believe.
Okay.
There's nine, there's nine concerts.
Okay, and I'll definitely maybe base off of how much progress we're getting between the first event, and you know, maybe we'll get a ton of responses.
Right, no, right. And the June 11th concert should be a key concert for you to attend because that's the first, and you don't want to show up in July in the middle of what your survey is doing and nobody knows what's going on. So if the June 11th one, they're always televised, everybody here in the community that gets Comcast can watch it, or they can watch it on YouTube.
That's good.
So that way you can introduce yourselves, so what's going on with the master plan and what you're looking to accomplish with the survey, and get more attention for people to understand what they're, nobody likes to do surveys.
Of course.
So this way they understand what you're approaching them for.
Yeah, and that's why I think maybe getting a table map where people can actually just leave their comments right there, because they don't have to go do the survey, so that might be a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, cool.
All right, so then once we know an exact date, I'll make sure everybody knows so that if any of us want to, well, those of us that are attending.
Yes, this meeting?
We...
That'll be a live one, I won't be...
Party night.
Probably it goes up on YouTube. You can...
June 11th, I think it's going to be. I'll remind you of it.
All right, yeah, just let Becky know a solid date and...
Yes, I'll just make sure it's good one.
And make sure.
On our schedules.
Okay, sounds good.
And what is another start?
Seven o'clock, seven till 8:30. Concerts in the park.
Except for your band.
We're not playing.
You're not playing this year, right?
No, I took this up. Because there's so much interest, I get so many people that want to play, and I just feel...
Give them the chance to...
Yeah, I want, I want to give other people opportunity.
Well...
Just play after 8 o'clock.
What's that?
Just play after 8 o'clock.
Yeah, there you go. The after-party show.
Right.
And now comes the real show.
Okay.
Um, anything else you want to go over with us? Anything we need to be doing or prepare for?
No homework this stuff?
Okay.
Not yet.
Okay, right.
When I get these revised, I'll send it out, but I will send out those demographics too for you guys to look at. It's interesting to see. But no, I have no homework right now.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
I don't know, kind of related note, did they mention the fact that we've got Sencoch membership? And if you're looking for any kind of demographic information?
Oh, you're on the, I got that on the website, no, it's not mentioned on there, but...
Okay.
I can definitely, that's where the information was pulled from.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're, the village is a member of them as well, so if there's anything you require that would be a place to go to, but if you already have access to it?
Yeah, yeah, that's where a lot, the census, and I think that was as well.
Okay.
From the, some of the demographics.
Okay, so I think we've covered quite a bit tonight. Really glad to see the hard copies and go over that. If you guys come up with anything, think of anything, make sure you write it down, email it, call Becky, whatever you need to. So we'll make sure we get it over to the planners. So we're on reports. I did hand out a flyer. There are some training programs going on. Becky did only just leave the one copy, so if there's something you're interested in, just kind of jot that down. Call her and she can get you any information that you need. Other than that, I don't really think I've got anything tonight. You guys got anything? Other than that, I don't really think I've got anything tonight, you guys got anything you want to comment on?
I want to ask a couple of questions about what our responsibility is as planning commission, because we've had the zoning board has approved some things, or that the village, the council did. What is the procedure when someone calls the office? Do they go through the planning commission first automatically, or is it, sometimes they just jump to the building inspector?
Well, they don't jump to the building inspector.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Something that needs to be done through the building inspector.
Well, when they, when they have something they're gonna do to their land, do they go through the building inspector, does he, instead of just sending to the zoning board of appeals? Do they, does he, is he probably supposed to send him back to planning commission, so we can look up our ordinances and make sure it's within?
Depends on what it is they're developing.
Well, there's two things that happened in the last, that I think everyone's aware of. That to me, it didn't even come to planning commission to even address and say, no, that's not legal, that you're not going through the proper, because it becomes, why are we even looking up at ordinances if not everybody's coming to us?
Not everyone has to, again, it depends on what their development is.
What their application states that they require, right?
But when the one added on and it was done wrong, he was told to go ahead. If there is a direction, like when they, if they call the office and say, who do I have to talk to, and they just put you to the building inspector? And then, and then he just, he said, well, that's not for me to decide, you'll have to go to zoning board of appeals, but if nobody's looking up the ordinances? Because the one is definitely illegal, but it was suggested to leave it alone. The second one I'm talking about was already done wrong illegally, they never went for, I think, and I don't know, because it goes way back, but now the second time that person has applied to have something added on to something that was already not in our ordinance book that way. Wouldn't that be a better idea to anybody calling the office to start with, with planning commission?
Well, if you're applying for a building permit, let's say to put a garage on or a shed, something like that, why would you come to planning commission?
Because these two that I'm talking about weren't doing that.
Okay, the first one, that's done and over with. That was a complete oversight by, as far as I'm concerned, more than one committee here in the village, but that one's done.
That's what I'm seeing, but if it had come to planning commission.
It was in front of planning commission, but there were text messages and verbal messages that were left and proven that they were there. And that was why, it was left to just let it be the way it is, he has proof that he was given permission to do so, which the building inspector does have the right to tell you that this is good, you can go ahead with this, or to tell you, you need to go to planning commission first, you need to talk to the village council first. He does have the right to do so and chooses which committee your particular application would fit into.
Yes, okay. I guess I'm just looking at that, a planning commission direction would be like the first, even if it is a garage, even if it's, you know, I mean, they want to put a garage on, okay, the building inspector, I know that that was a bad situation, who was in there at the time. But that, it like bypassed that the ones that would look and see if it's in ordinance, if it's in the right direction, would be planning commission.
That's the building inspector's decision to make, if it meets requirements, they're good to go, it is the building commissioners' right to say that this is good, pull a permit, you can do this. If something about the parameters do not work within our ordinance books, that's when they're told, you need to go to planning.
Okay, so because it was just.
So we're pretty much here just for exceptions to the rule?
No, that's the zoning board.
That's the zoning board.
The zoning?
We're from, we're from the basic, okay, and I know that situation, like I was a neighbor of mine, it still like makes me nuts. But, this other one, to me, the building inspector should have reverted back so that we could remind that in this, and that was done wrong in the first place, and then to do more of that on the.
And this is, you're talking the second one?
The second one.
You're talking this was done after?
The Main Street thing?
The whole debacle that went on.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I was under the impression that there was supposed to be a bit more rain on the building inspector, the code enforcers.
No, he went, he went from building inspector and went right to zoning board of appeals, because he didn't know that, you know, to, what to say. And to me, he, he might just be misdirected, like really, the chain would be to start with us, if you don't, you don't go to zoning board immediately.
Is Dennis still our building inspector?
Yeah, and Dennis can't send you directly to the zoning board of appeals.
But how, who says that? Who says that? Is that an unwritten law somewhere? I haven't read anything like how that.
Usually that's on the ordinance.
Right.
That it is that way?
Yeah.
For the, okay, we'll see, because we can get in trouble, because the zoning board then turned around and gave permission to something that was wrong when it was first done, but it got bypassed, like I don't know how long ago it was, if it's over twenty years ago.
It is.
And now to continue that and do it wrong more is not a good message.
No, actually, the appeal that's being requested on the second one does not put it any further out of compliance than it already is. It's okay on each side, coming this way towards the sidewalk is out of compliance. That was the original, that was the original debacle, because it then shouldn't have been approved, but for some reason they couldn't find the order, the orders hadn't been updated to include that kind of thing, I don't know. I wasn't part of that then, was around, but I wasn't part of it. But, so now the request now is to go along that line and make it a little wider this way towards the boundaries that are in compliance, and she's not going farther, far enough to make it out of compliance further, because she's okay on this side and on this side.
Okay, now that's not how it's been explained to me, that's not, that it's in compliance, that's not how I understood it, so.
We're only in certain directions.
Right. Because.
Cause it was my understanding.
She's going. She can't go, she, your setback is six foot from your side yard property, she's got that whole driveway, and then another small piece of yard that has steps to go up sideways. So she's only going to the edge of the house, that this ten foot driveway is still the other side of where she would, she'd have to be in the middle of that driveway to make it out of compliance, she's not going.
But what about toward the front sidewalk?
She's not going anything.
Further towards the front sidewalk. Then what's there?
That's what the ZBA said, we won't allow you to go any further than what it is already out of compliance in, so she's not adding to the problem that way, she's going that way.
Okay, see, I, I don't agree that, I think it's, because it was done wrong to add on to something that's wrong.
She could ask for a new variance and go the other side of it and not, not go that far on the other side and do it in another separate little chunk.
Okay, well here's, what I'm trying to avoid is that we keep on, you know, slipping these things through that got slipped through, like the Main Street, not done, if this isn't wrong.
I don't know what her hardship is, why she has to do this, because ZBIA, you almost always have to prove a hardship.
It does, it says that right in the, in her book.
So I don't know what the hardship is.
Yeah.
Whether her steps are unsafe or something, I don't, that part I don't know, but I know she's not going any further towards the sidewalk. So I was.
I needed an explanation.
It's okay.
Can I just explain something a little bit different, maybe a different perspective? In the ordinance, there is typically a section, I don't know what your ordinance, but of nonconformities, and a lot of these go for things like this that slipped through, or maybe were built prior to the zoning ordinance. Then they're then categorized as illegal nonconforming, they can exist, but you can't expand on the, on the nonconforming part of it. So if you're saying that she's close to the sidewalk, she wouldn't be able to, or she, I think you said, this person would not be able to expand the nonconforming, but the BZI can give her justification to expand the other way, as long as she still stays within the conformity, but they're not allowed to expand on the nonconforming without. And then also these type of structures, if they were damaged, usually percentage is about sixty percent damage, within sixty percent, they would have to then conform to completely the new zoning ordinance. If they were to, you know, have a fire or a tree fall on it, they would then have to conform, but they can stand as.
Yeah.
They can stand as is, as a legal nonconforming structure.
Technically not wrong, that it's not wrong, it was already allowed, it's already done, it was already there.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not technically wrong, so she's not adding more wrong to her wrong. What she has is now allowed because it was already there. So, and that's what Alicia's saying, is that she can continue in certain directions, but she cannot come out this way where it, now it would become wrong.
Just even like a land use, like if say something got rezoned, but there was a commercial, now it's industrial, but the commercial can stay until they go out of business or whatnot, and then they have to conform, or if someone took over that exact business, they could stay.
Yeah.
Until.
Right.
So it's the same type of thing, they can't expand on the nonconformity, that would be, the BZI would have to give that approval, but typically they won't. But if she's not expanding, she's not minimizing the conformity, the nonconformity portion of it, she can do that.
Right.
Or they can correct that there.
I just, I, I'm concerned that we're like sending the wrong message and then, you know, two of them that were, okay, but then that one did answer.
Definitely, that was, that was a debacle, it does not look well for us, but it was, it was done.
It was already done.
Decision was made, it was done.
No, and I understand, from the council view, I, yeah, I know that the whole story of why, why it was directed that way, I do.
The delay time was the biggest issue.
Yes, but again, done.
Sometimes they kind of need to get down with a new risk court, you know, if they got the approval, but some cities will say, hey, you put this up, it's not conforming, you got to get down, but thingy risk, yeah.
Do you feel better about the explanation? Is there anything else?
It's not, I just want to do this, this job responsibly. I think we have to answer to people, I don't want to see things like that continue, and that's.
Yeah, again, it is the building inspector's right.
It's not your problem.
He makes, he makes the decision on whether it would just be a planning commission thing to handle, or if there's, like Joe said, the hardship, they would automatically go to.
But that's it too, that's, and I don't know the details of how that is a hardship, I don't know, so. But, yeah, cause I looked for that word in there, because I was told, you know, there's a hardship, and I'm like, I can't imagine there's a hardship, but.
Yeah, I don't know, because it wasn't brought before us, I don't have all the details on that property either.
Um, that was, that was it.
Anybody got anything else?
I was gonna just, two things and I'll wrap it up.
Yeah.
So there was some discussion a while back regarding addresses in the village. The fire department has flyers at the township hall, if anyone's interested in getting addresses. Unfortunately, I don't have much more information than that, so just go to the township hall, if people want to get the addresses on the property, and they'll be with the fire department.
So they go to the township hall, not the fire department hall?
Correct, they'll be going to the township hall, correct, township hall. And our next meeting will be on June sixteenth.
Awesome, okay, oh, which would actually fall after the June eleventh, so yeah, let us know what your thoughts are on that.
I mean, if I can, I'll discuss next time.
Excellent, excellent.
June, our next meeting is June sixteenth, one six.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Well, then we're looking for one more item.
Motion to adjourn, so our village of our May of Planning Commission Regular Meeting, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five at seven forty-five PM. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries adjourn.